Seconded by Alderman Ross for the approval of the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Item number two is the approval of the minutes from the council meeting from May 20th, 2019. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to say, uh, Dowie does a very thorough and accurate job. So, very, very well done on those minutes.
Well, thank you for that nice comment. And that second was Busker, right? So we have a motion made by Brasshaw, seconded by Busker, for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Do we have any public comments? None. Item number four is the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda will be considered to be routine in nature as acted as one motion unless there's a member of the council would like to have something removed for further discussion. The consent agenda consists of approval and place on file, the minutes from the Historic Preservation Commission meeting from April 16th, 2019, as well as the Greater Freeport Partnership report to Mayor Miller and Manager Crowe. B is the approval of the finance bills payable in the total of $1,873,57.35 and the approval of payroll from pay period ending May 25th, 2019, in the total of $465,641.45. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second it.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Ross. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the approval of the consent agenda?
Bornhamon.
I approve.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brasshaw?
Aye.
And Mysick?
Aye.
Uh, the consent agenda is approved to six to zero.
Thank you. Item number five is the appointment for boards and commissions. Could you please read this, Madam Clerk?
Acceptance of an appointment of Lucas Kramer to the library board effective immediately.
Is there such a motion, council?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Then there is a motion made by Alderman McLanathan, seconded by Alderman Busker for the approval of Lucas Kramer. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Bornhamon?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brasshaw?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next is a recognition of service awards by Manager Crowe.
Mark, join us up here. And Chief? So this is, uh, to recognize Mark Honnerbaum, is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. For recognition for five years of service, uh, to the city of Freeport. So this is congratulations for that. And we can, there you go.
Thank you.
And you also get a whole five Greater Freeport Partnership bucks that you can spend in any of the Greater Freeport Partnership memberships. So, and I'll let Chief talk about you.
Uh, sorry, wait a minute. I'm sure here's all Mark's show up at the station here, um, which we handle your, knowing the required planning experience and law medical experience in terms of, uh, Freeport. So hit the ground running. Um, Mark has been nothing but an outstanding employee since his time here at Freeport. He is a well-handled manager, he's a team, uh, team leader, and also works with a closely regarded as coordinator, uh, basically as assistant to that man for two months during his time and after making sure that we are all standard, uh, paramedics and staff. So, um, I know it's kind of cliche, but if I could get ten more Mark Honnerbaums to come over to Freeport, I'd do it tomorrow. Mark, congratulations.
Thank you, Mark. Item number seven is the second reading of ordinance 201932. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
An ordinance amending Part Eight Business Regulation and Taxation Code, Chapter 874 Regulation of Tobacco Products and Chapter 650 Minors, Section 650.04 Sale of Cigarettes or Tobacco to Minors of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Freeport.
So...
Manager Crowe.
Sorry, Madam Mayor. The, uh, there is one amendment to this from the first reading. We have extended out the video to forty-five days. Talking with Chief, um, he said as a minimum thirty-five days, uh, forty-five days, uh, would be acceptable, but if the council, we want to put forty-five in there, it is, he does say thirty-five. I may ask you to talk a little bit about that, Chief.
That's right. Um, yeah, on the recommendation, um, by Alderman Bornhamon, um, we extended that out just a little bit for any kind of financial, um, thefts or financial identity thefts, um, whereas somebody maybe not be notified that they've been a victim of that, um, if we just went with the thirty days. Many times folks' identification being compromised, um, whether it be a debit card, a credit card, or, you know, a link card, however it is, um, many times, uh, folks go to these particular tobacco places and, um, you know, and use that information. If, if we can get that past that thirty-five day, anywhere from thirty-five to forty-five, I've been in contact with, um, Attorney Cox on this, and, um, he just did a quick little research. It would require probably a little bit more of a storage. Storage means dollars, uh, for those particular places, but it, this is technology that's readily available on any kind of, uh, you know, um, you know, um, extra hard drive or whatever they have. So, um, we've, um, been working with them that we can tweak that, or we can, we, sometimes we help them tweak their machines a little bit, maybe to, maybe not record it such a high definition that, that doesn't require as much storage as well. So I, I would open up to any questions, but I, I would support that as well, um, anywhere between thirty-five to forty-five, and, and put that, the onus on the stores and, and not on us, and we just, uh, enforce it from here on out.
So, I, I believe there wasn't a formal motion on first reading on this. It was just a, a request from us, uh, to, I'd have to go back to the minutes on this. Um, there was a, to research this, so that the first thing we'll need is a motion for the amendment, um, to amend it from thirty days to forty-five days.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so before you counsel is a, um, motion for amending ordinance 201935 with the language of... 201932, I'm sorry, um, to amend the, the thirty-day storage to be forty-five. Uh, the motion was made by Alderman Bornhamon, seconded by Alderman McLanathan. Is there any discussions on the amendment only? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you, I'm sorry?
Mayor?
Yes.
Have there been any discussions with business owners on their capability? Like... Yes.
Yeah, well, we know what their capability is, and this, right now, is, is barely thirty. Sometimes we...
Okay.
We have to encourage them and to check on them, but the capability is there. Um, so that's, that's readily available to them, and we will, we can help them, uh, you know, to, to, to show them what they do need to, to be able to get to that forty-five, but, um, that's, um, that's what it is right now.
In other words, it's not a hardship?
No, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be a hardship. It's gonna be, eh, storage means, you know, it, it's additional, additional cost, but not, you know, no, it's not outrageous. No, not at all.
Any further questions, council?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, Alderman Busker.
Uh, just curious, you said that, uh, we can assist them in adjusting their equipment, uh, to fit that. Would that open the city up to any liabilities for anything?
We're, we're doing that right now. Uh, Deputy Chief Summers, uh, and Lieutenant Davis go out and help them as they go through on, actually showing them sometimes how to run their machines, let alone setting them up, and they walk them through that. So, it does not, it's because it's in part of the code enforcement.
Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan?
I note from prior experience, seeing, um, a lot of the, a lot of the times where these videos come into play, um, and, uh, some, some things are not, it's very frustrating to have a situation where you know that there's a system, and it's either not in compliance or not set to the parameters that would allow you to obtain, uh, the, the range that you're looking for. So I think the amendment is, um, uh, is well reasoned and, um, also not an undue burden, so, um, I'm in favor of it.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would just say that there, the burden that is on the, the store owner is, uh, is gonna be outweighed by the, the benefit to the public, uh, to the potential victims, and, and in certain situations, even the stores themselves to have that extra storage. So, I do acknowledge there's gonna be a burden there, but I think it's, uh, for the, the best, and, you know, like I said, for, for those people I've already mentioned.
Uh, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the amendment only?
Bornhamon?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brasshaw?
Aye.
And Mysick?
Aye.
The ordinance passes six to zero.
Okay, so now before you counsel is an amended version of ordinance 201932. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role in that passage.
I'm, I'm sorry. Okay, now on the passage of, with, with the amendment. Okay, sorry about that. I don't have a voting. Bornhamon?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brasshaw?
Aye.
And Mysick?
Aye.
So I read the last one improperly. The last vote, just the amendment passed, and now the entire ordinance as amended passes six to zero. My apologies.
Correct. Nope, you're good. Item number eight is the first reading of ordinance 201933. Could you please read this?
An ordinance amending Chapter 1440 Administration Generally, Section 1440.02 Building Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Freeport, reducing the number of members of the Building Commission.
Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the, the very last, we believe, the very last cleanup as we've gone to city manager, uh, form of government. Uh, this removes the, under the old Building Commission, there was a member from the city council who sat on that. I am actually the chair of the Building Commission, and it makes it, uh, difficult for me to chair over a, a panel that I'm, that has a member on it that's my, also my boss, uh, as it goes forward. The or, the original, the council member was on there as the representative for the mayor, and since I'm the representative for the council on the Building Commission, that removes the council member from the Building Commission.
Matt? Alderman McLanathan?
When we were, and I think Attorney Sinowski was the one who was, uh, leading this, when we were doing all the rework, um, for the change in government system, did, uh, did we make this a similar change to various other boards that had something like this, that you're aware of? Or were there any others, or was this the only board?
This was the only board that was like that.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Brasshaw?
Thank you. And it is true that, that council members are always welcome to attend these meetings anyhow, even though they don't generally join in the discussion, such as the Building Commission, Planning Commission. I've gone to several of, even the Housing Commission meetings. So if we...
That's correct.
Want our input, and we want to listen, it's not a problem.
The, the difference is, is you're, you're then, you're not representing yourself as a council member on that. You're, you're, as a member of the audience coming in to speak as a council, you, you don't give your opinions, uh, as a council member, where in that case, it would be, and there might be, I, there might be a situation where you're then, uh, if the members, we've never had anybody come to the Building Commission. I hate to say it, it's, it's one of the least attended, uh, uh, boards, but, uh, unless you love reviewing building codes, um, so it, uh, you might be in a position where you're, you're ruling on a situation where then you have to vote on later on, uh, here as a council member.
Attorney Sinowski?
Mayor, one other clarification that I wanted to make with regarding this ordinance is, um, there we go. One other clarification that I wanted to make regarding this ordinance is even if the council decided that it did not want to remove a member of council, that language from the ordinance, I would suggest that the Building Commission be reduced in some way, shape, or form. Currently, you have eight members to the Building Commission. I think it would work better from a, um, voting standpoint if there were an odd number of members on the commission. Uh, the way that it is currently established, there's an even number which could constantly result in a tie. Again, not that there are very often that there are ties, um, but with the composition that you currently have, uh, it certainly could occur where there would be a vote of four and four. So, I would suggest that, um, in some way, shape, or form, you do make a change to the composition of the Building Commission, if nothing more than to eliminate situations in which there would be a tie vote.
Mayor?
Alderman Mysick?
So, do you see this in other municipalities that have switched form of government?
This is the only municipality that I have that has changed to the city manager form of government, so unfortunately, I couldn't speak to that. Um, in terms of whether or not there would be a member of a council on a board or commission, I usually see members of council serving as ad hoc positions only and not with voting rights.
And like it was stated earlier, this is the only one that has a mayoral appointee, so it just makes sense to get him all in line.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Busker?
Motion to move this forward.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion, council? We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Brasshaw, to move ordinance 201933 onto the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number nine is the first reading of ordinance 201934. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
An ordinance of the City of Freeport approving and authorize the city to enter into a lease purchase agreement with dear credit incorporated for a lawnmower.
Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council already had approved the lease, and we already have the mower here. This is to, uh, follow up and make a formal approval of that lease. As we said, that lease was for the mower that died out at the, uh, to replace the mower that had died out at the airport. Uh, we are, do have it operating out there in this, but this is the formal, to make sure we, we had approved the lease, but the formal acceptance of that lease has to be done via ordinance.
Manager Crowe, do we have that lawnmower already?
We do, Mayor. It's, it's cutting great. Daryl loves it.
Okay.
Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan?
Just to avoid any confusion, um, it wasn't purchased until after we had the prior approval at a...
That's correct.
Public meeting.
It was, it wasn't, it wasn't until after the public meeting.
Just want to put that out there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Alderman Brasshaw?
I'd like to make a motion to move this forward.
Second it.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Ross, to move ordinance 201934 onto the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number 10 is the first reading of ordinance 201935. Could you please read this?
An ordinance amending Section 480.24 Handicapped Persons and Disabled Veterans of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Freeport.
Thank you. Director Carr?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, this parking spot is located on Fourth Street, um, over in the arcade, not too far off of Shoney. Um, when this handicap spot was first placed there, the, uh, there was a, one of the homeowners was a, was a handicap lady there, um, and both her and her husband had asked the city to have this handicap spot put in. Um, they're the only ones that have ever parked in it, um, and sadly, um, the, the lady who used the handicap spa, spot over there in that neighborhood, uh, had passed away, and so, her husband had asked, had come in here and asked me if, if we could just take the sign down, and so I explained to him that, that we have to bring it through council. Um, so, here I'm following through. Um, from what I have heard out there, there's nobody that uses the parking spot, and so, um, they would like the handicap spot taken away.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Brasshaw?
I'd like a motion to move this forward.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Busker, to move ordinance 201935 to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Was there any further discussion, council?
Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan?
Uh, Director, when you spoke with, uh, the individuals on that, is it something where they can wait a couple of weeks, uh, for it to get removed, or do we need to, I mean, it, it, there's no emergency that we have to suspend the rules for it tonight, is there?
No, I explained to them that if we were to put it on today's council, that it wouldn't pass until the third week.
Great, okay, thank you.
Okay, item number 11 is the first reading of ordinance 201936. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
An ordinance amending Section 480.20 Two-Hour Parking Locations of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Freeport.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I got approached by the two Aldermen that are not here, about, uh, taking down the, uh, two-hour parking around City Hall to support, uh, parking both around city, uh, this, around City Hall as well as the Masonic, uh, temple. Right now, we have two-hour parking. It's only on one side of the street and on Walnut. I've had Chief look at this as well as, uh, Director Carr, and there is no real impact. They would pull these signs down and open these up so there isn't the two-hour restriction. Um, and it really is to help City Hall. We have some long-term meetings that occur. Uh, the people, uh, they don't, I, I have a ver, or I should say, Chief has a very astute parking, uh, attendant, and, uh, this will allow them to attend longer meetings here at the city, uh, as well as the Masonic temple afterwards.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Brasshaw?
Thank you. Chief Barklow, I'm picking on you because you've been here a little bit longer than a few of us.
Okay.
Um, can you tell me why these were originally made two-hour parking spots?
Well, this was a library, I think, at, at one particular time, so they, they wanted, there was a lot more activity around here, so they, they wanted people to come in and, and leave, and now this has changed from a, to a City Hall. People are gonna be doing business here a little bit longer. The same with the Masonic. Um, I, I, I really don't see a need for, for two-hour parking, uh, here any longer.
Follow-up? So do you kind of consider this like a housekeeping manner?
Absolutely. Consider this housekeeping manner.
With that said, I'd like to move this forward and make a motion to move it forward, please.
Second.
Any further discussion, council? Seeing none, we have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Busker, to move ordinance 201936 to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Next is item number 12, which is the approval of a bid. Madam Clerk, would you please read this?
Approval of bid opening on May 24th, 2019, for two squad cars and one pursuit vehicle.
Thank you. Chief?
Sure. Uh, first, I just want to clear this up. These are all three just sedan squad car, police package. Um, they, they're, uh, two different bids, though. Um, they are just a little bit different. Um, two of the bids are for the all-wheel-drive interceptor sedan. Those will be the, like, the marked squads. And the other bid was for, uh, the, the exact same thing, only, and it will be unmarked, um, and it will have, like, it's, um, kind of the civilian version of that. It won't have a spotlight mounted on the outside. This can be detective car only, so it'll have, you know, like, carpeting on the floor, and, and just like a, a, a regular car that you would buy off the lot, although it will be a police package Ford interceptor is actually what they're called. Um, again, on May 24th, we had, uh, bid openings. Um, I sealed bids. I, I personally, um, hand-delivered all the bid packets to, um, all the local dealers. Now, we had it on the city website, and we wanted to open those bids and then compare that with the state bid that, uh, was awarded to Greenfield Motors in Greenfield, Illinois. Actually, it was the Morrow Brothers in Greenfield, Illinois. Um, we, there was no bids here to be opened. Uh, nobody, uh, wanted to bid against the state bid. Uh, the state bid was, uh, $28,630 for the, kind of the basic police interceptor squad car. This would be, had the vinyl on the floor, you know, it just, it's, it's just pretty much, um, a, a pretty basic car. And the $30,065 was for the all-wheel police interceptor, same thing, just without the, the spotlight and, um, with, uh, the carpet and, and some of those things. And I, I realize that the price is a little bit more on that one, but that's kind of like when you go to McDonald's and order Quarter Pounder and hold the pickles. You know, it's just, you know, there's not a whole lot of them there that, so they have to kind of, kind of a, a, a special deal, but they do have these. Uh, it'll be used primarily by, by the Detective Bureau. Um, we did have some, uh, trade-ins, um, for that, and you don't have the upgraded numbers, but we have trade-ins, uh, four vehicles that we're trading in, 2016 and, uh, F3, that's actually a frontline vehicle that, that we're gonna, um, be trading in. 2014, uh, utility squad, two thou, another, uh, 2014 utility squad, and then the F9, the old K9 squad that we got originally, it was, we bought that used at the time, and we're gonna trade that in, and the new number on that is $6,200 for our, for what they're giving us for a trade-in allowance on that. Um, so, um, I, I would request that we, um, um, that we accept the Morrow Brothers, uh, Ford state bid, and for, for all of those, and there, there's a breakdown on, on the memo that, that I gave to you, would be for $98,044. Um, funding for that would come out of money that we had budgeted in two different accounts. Um, we only have to wrap one squad. Uh, um, we, and, and some of these now, we're getting into the point where we are be able to take, um, some of that specialized equipment that fits that Ford to put it into, to these, so, um, that's why you see, uh, just one partition and one set of, uh, windows. Go ahead, um, Low.
The one thing I want to point out, this is the very last year for this amount.
Right, right. I, I wanted to mention that earlier. This is, this, these, uh, they stopped production on these. So they've stopped this line. They've now switched over to the SUV line, and, and those, if we would have ordered those, which would have been more money, they wouldn't even be ready for delivery until later this fall. They had, I think, eighty-five of these on the lot still. These are 2019 new, and so, a, as long as these were on the lot and available, I wanted to, to grab these as, 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 as many as I could anyway, and we can get three of them. The, our, but our officers are very happy with these. Um, all-wheel drive, um, a little bit bigger, and, uh, they're, they're, they're very happy with them.
Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan?
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of questions on these. Um, this, just looking at it from funding, this will drain, uh, the, uh, budgeted capital fund that was, uh, budgeted in your budget for these vehicles, correct, with a little bit over into the radio fund, is that what I see?
Yes, into the, the radio, um, and vehicle fund. Um, we will, um, be taking about $4,000 out of that to, to cover these.
Given, um, past budget histories, you feel comfortable with the amount remaining in the emergency radio repair?
Yes.
Obviously, within a margin of error.
Sure, absolutely.
Um, follow-up? Uh, I saw in your presentation and you, um, or in your written presentation, then what you said tonight, um, you did, uh, hand-deliver packets to all the major auto dealers, and this was electronically attached to the city's website. Get a little curious when we don't get any bids back, but, um, historically, how long has it been since we, uh, or, or historically, have we been, pretty much been going with the state bid for the last few years, or have we, um, have, have we found the local dealers to be competitive to the point where we went with some of them in the past years?
Historically, we, we, here in, in the recent history, we've been going with the state bid. If we go back even further, uh, when we were driving Chevys, generally, uh, the local dealer would, would actually get these cars at the state bid price and then, um, try to, you know, get those at the same amount, so we would go with the local dealer. So, you know, that, that's what we've done in the past, but that hasn't since, in about three or four years that we've, we've driven Chevys.
Uh, one follow-up, Mayor. Um, I realize this is asking for speculation, but do you think, um, since it's been a few years, that we've been going with the state bid, that that contributed to the lack of bids this year?
I, I do.
Okay.
Absolutely do.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Busker?
Yeah, Chief Barklow, is there anyone besides Ford that's actually putting out a decent police vehi, vehicle package at this time, or are they kind of the only decade right now?
I think Dodge is, is, um, got, got a, a nice package. Um, we, um, you know, I, not to say, I, I think the Dodge has historically been a little bit more expensive. Um, and I would, uh, you know, I was, I'm happy with the Fords. I like to, to keep it pretty consistent, so, um, right now, it's, um, you know, it is Dodge, um, and Ford basically is, you know, kind of monopolizing the, the market.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Brasshaw?
Thank you. Chief, I see that these can be delivered immediately if, uh, if you need so, uh, but how long does it take to wrap them and get all the, the controls put in?
Right. It, it, there, that's a good question, and that takes a little time, depending on, on the availability of, we, we use busboys and mobile electronics, um, uh, with the availability of, of those particular, so sometimes we're, we're kind of waiting for, for them to, um, get us into that, but I would say, um, these wouldn't take too long, and, and if this was approved tonight, um, that, uh, we would, uh, get the, get the ball rolling to get these as soon as we could.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Busker?
I'd make a motion to approve the bid.
Second it.
Since, um, the dollar figures aren't the same on what's written before the council, do we need to actually specify that, or does it not matter? Okay, so, what we would need then would be, um, a motion to accept the Morrow Brothers at $98,044. You good with that? then would be a motion to accept the Morrow Brothers at $98,044. You good with that? Okay. By Alderman Busker and Alderman Ross, you good with that? All right, second on that. So, any further discussion, council? So, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the approval of the Morrow Brothers at $98,044?
Bornhamon.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
And Mysick.
Aye.
The bid is approved eight to zero.
Thank you. Next would be the department heads, finance.
Thank you, Your Honor. I could speak for a good hour on what happened in Springfield, but I think I'll pass and wish everyone a good evening.
We appreciate you not burning our ears. Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Just generally speaking, I know we've gotten some updates from the Illinois Municipal League. I'm not asking you to give a long list of recitation on that. Do you anticipate us discussing down the road some of the ramifications of this budget, on our budget, as we move forward?
For the most part, we could be seeing some additional revenue as far as the cannabis bill, depending on where they have the distribution center at, that we could possibly tax it up to 3%. The sports betting, we probably won't see any of that money. The budget is $40 million, $40 billion. Last year's budget, I believe, was $36 billion, so there's another increase. But they also increased the gas tax by 19 cents, and of that 19 cents, we will see part of that coming towards our way. Forty-nine percent of that increase is supposed to go to local projects based on population. So, we'll almost see almost a doubling of our MFT money because they're doubling the gas tax. The other taxes that went to effect, we probably won't see. One thing that I was concerned with was the local government distribution formula, also known as the income tax distribution. They cut it by 10% two years ago, and they cut it by 5% last year, and they kept that 5% in this year, even though both years they said they were going to restore it. So, we're going to see about the same amount of money in our income tax fund contributions from the state as we did this past year. They also took a little more money out of the personal property replacement tax, which we use to fund, help fund our three pension systems. So, that's going to have a little bit of an impact on us. And they also kept the home real sales tax administration fee of 1.5% in there. We were hoping that that would be reduced to 1% or taken away altogether, but that did not happen. So, we will see a little bit of an impact, both good and bad.
Thank you.
Alderman Bornhamon.
I apologize, Director. Since you brought it up, though, I was curious, the sports gambling, I haven't had a chance to read the statute and the new law, but you said you don't anticipate the city getting any funds from that. Why, and what would we need to do to?
It's basically going towards their, the infrastructure bill. So, we may get it indirectly, but we're not going to get any direct payments.
Thanks.
Community developer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Wanted to let you know, May was the busiest month ever for code enforcement, and by a pretty wide margin, actually. We had over 650 activities logged in our iWork software. Nearly 350 of those were related to overgrown grass and weeds. Just to give you a quick year-over-year comparison, last year in May of 2018, there were only 230 code enforcement activities performed compared to 650 this year, and half of those, or 115, were related to grass compared to 350 this year. I'm really just proud of my team, and it's really only two guys that are doing all that, Doug and Dennis, for nearly tripling their performance from last year. And we're getting a lot better at responding to the complaints of our residents, and we're going to keep improving that, and we want to do even better in June and July and beyond.
Thank you. Yes.
So, you guys are all in the hot seat here. I just, this wasn't something you brought up, but is it true that Uber and Lyft, we are in the areas where if somebody from the area wants to become a driver there, they could apply?
Yeah, that came up during one of the comprehensive plan advisory committees, and we did some research and found on both Uber and Lyft's websites, we're in established territories that are headquartered in Rockford, but extend both to, out to Freeport for them both. Yep.
And we actually believe, watching the Uber app, we believe we may have one or two Uber drivers within the city. We see them pop up every now and then on the app.
Great.
Madam Mayor.
Public Works.
Mayor, sorry.
I'm sorry, sure. Oh, Alderman Busker.
Yes, I was just wondering, are contractors for grass mowing, are they able to keep up, or are they backlogged with the rain?
We've been hammering them so much, he's fallen just a little bit behind, you know, a lot better admittedly than I've heard from last year, but he's, he's a little bit behind, but he's, he's working to keep on top, and he's not, he's not far enough behind that. I'm really worried about it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We've gotten our second summer hire. He's going to be starting downtown on Wednesday, so we'll have both of our summer hires to be taking care of the plantings and then as well as the mulching. We've got our first summer hire starting out at the cemetery. He started today. So, that brings us up to three. We were initially looking for four, so if the fourth one comes along, probably snatch them up. If not, we can make do with what we've got. I was contacted today by a testing services company. They're going to be working for Dunn and on the Woodside Drive project, so they're hoping to do some cores, so that way they can give us a mixed design for the road. So, it looks like Woodside Drive is beginning to kind of move along. We've got a hook lift bid opening on Friday at 3:00 for our, both snowplow as well as our leaf pickup machine. We should have that here on 3:00. And then, we've got the bid opening for the old Cherokee resurfacing next Tuesday at 10:00 o'clock, so busy time.
Okay, didn't want to move on too quickly. None? Okay. Fire.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, but I have nothing to report tonight.
And police.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to announce, Thursday, we'll be conducting our Special Olympic Torch Run, and we'll be running, starting at Walgreens at 1:00, and running to Malcolm Eaton on Thursday. So, we got that. Also, just to kind of touch base on what we're talking about, as far as the Springfield and what's happened this last week, I spoke with State's Attorney Carl Larson today, and we're going to work together to try to move forward, you know, with some of the new laws, particularly the recreational cannabis laws. So, that is something that we'll work through, and I'm sure that it's going, it's a lot of moving parts to that.
Thank you. Any questions? Water and Sewer.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Wanted to go and give an update about Float Street. It's been moving along. There hasn't been that much rain within the last week, so they are not able to get ahead of schedule, but they are moving as best they can. And then also, I had a crew out over near the Arts Plaza today, but that whole area there is just too saturated to really go and start installing that storm work, but it is on our radar.
Where do we stand with Sean E.?
Uh...
I'm sorry, that was the wrong person. You made me think about when you talked about float. I apologize.
We have paved all the way up to 16th Street. We will be looking to mill between 16th and 18th in the next few weeks, and then finish that off.
Thank you. IT.
Thank you, Mayor. Today was the first day for the new deputy IT director, Eric Stromberg. I think he's got a really good skill set, and working as a team, I think we're going to see a lot of new stuff coming out of the IT department. Also, there's a new app out there for the citizens to use called Text My Gov. If they text, kind of the main menu is if you text "hi" to 815-240-2169, you can file code complaint cases, citizen request forms, or just get general information about the city. It's out there, and it's also on the website if you want to check it out a little more. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, you might state the?
Not so fast. I mean, is this available now? When does this go?
It is live now. If you go to the website, there's a whole bunch of special terms, predefined terms. You can text to that number, and you'll get pretty immediate feedback. It takes about 20 seconds, whether it be a link to a website, office hours for City Hall, or any information we add in the future.
And you had said that this can be used for, what, pothole, tree trimming, nuisance issues, things of that nature?
Yep. The key word for that is if you text "report" to, I don't have the number in front of me, but the number I stated, it'll walk you through a report in a pothole, I think loose dog, tree trimming, things like that.
This is, this is a follow-on. It's put together by the same company that puts iWorks together, so this is, makes it even simpler.
Just a new way to get there.
New way to get there.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. And Kurt, I really appreciate this, because you know how, it's so hard for me with new technology. He's nodding. He's worked with me several times. The iWork application doesn't always work completely on my phone. You know, I have that new phone again. The grass and weeds app portion works great. It will not download the pothole applications, which sounds really strange, that it will do one and not the other, but it forces me to have to call those in, and it makes it awkward as well to try to explain to my constituents when they tell me that a portion will work on their phone and yet the other won't. So, this texting thing, I think, is going to be so much more simplified, and I am going to ask you, if I can be first in line, to have you speak at my Neighborhood Watch meeting in July, and go over this with my constituents, because a lot of them have been afraid of the technology, and have complained that the iWork was just too complicated for them to download another application.
I will be there.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Bornhamon.
So, this would be a situation where if a neighbor were to see something like an overgrown lawn, they'd be able to text 815-240-2169?
Correct. They would, they would text the word "report" to that, and then it'll send, it'll walk you through it, through text responses. I guess at this point, I should say, I think text rates apply, just so you're aware of that, but it'll walk you right through it.
Great. This seems like a very useful, useful app. I'm glad that we're getting it done.
I hope so.
We're one of the first communities to use this through iWorks.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
Yeah, have you guys put this flyer on the Facebook page for the city?
It's not on the Facebook. It is on the website, but I'll get it up there tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any other questions for IT? Okay, thank you, Kurt.
Thanks.
And library.
Good evening. You'll see that I gave you all a calendar, a list of all of our programs. That's throughout the entire summer for everything we're doing for our summer reading club, and you can join me on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. to have me register your kids or grandchildren for the summer reading program. I'm working the registration table, so I hope to see you then. Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Can you put this on Facebook, or is it available on Facebook, so we can share it with our family members and other Google little?
Yes. Well, we have, normally, we just have like one event on there, but we can work on getting a link and stuff that directs to our website.
Okay, thank you.
So, mm-hmm.
Thank you, Ashley. City manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple items here. On the 11th and 12th, we will be interviewing our, can be, conducting interviews for our new fire chief. And there, we have four candidates that are coming in, one from Illinois, two from Iowa, and one from Virginia that we'll be interviewing. Additionally, Wednesday afternoon, Thursday, and then Friday morning, myself, Director Bukus, and our intern will be at the state conference in Galena. It's actually 40, 45 minutes away, so if we need to, we can run back. But we'll be back here. The intern is being paid by Northern to attend, and she is also involved with the, she's doing, we're coordinating with the Greater Freeport Partnership to do the translation. She's fluent in Spanish. She is originally from Southern California, fluent in Spanish, and she's doing translations for documents for the Greater Freeport Partnership. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of events to remind the council. In case you don't know in the listening audience, we have lots of things happening that are almost no cost to the public this weekend. First, on Friday night is the Music on Chicago, so if you'd like to attend that. And then also on Friday night, in the debate site, is a free movie outdoor showing of Greatest Showman. So, I know lots of little kids love that movie, so bring your family for that if you'd like. And also on Saturday, for a part of the airport report, is the youth aviation program, where they give free airplane rides to children ages eight to 17. So, that's Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00, so all they need is a parental consent in order to get in the airplane, have a free ride. And then lastly, on Sunday, if you could show your support to the 66th Annual Ice Cream Social that raises money for the Stevenson County Historical Society. That is Sunday from noon to 4:00. So, just a few things to support in the community if you have time in your schedules. So, that leaves new business. Alderman Bornhamon.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things. As I mentioned, and was discussed, Freeport does appear to be in the area for an Uber and Lyft, so if you're out there and you're looking for an extra income, if you're out there and you know somebody who's looking for extra income, spread the word, because I think that'd be a great resource for our city. I think one of the problems is that a lot of people don't realize that we are in that jurisdiction or in that district, and we do have that option. I personally, you know, when I'm not in Freeport, use that app all the time. It's a great app, and I hope to see that come to the city. Secondly, I hope I'm not stealing any other of the Alderman's thunder here, but a congratulations to our city manager, who received an award that I, something along the lines of city manager of the year, but I know I'm probably not saying that right, but congratulations to you, Lowell. We appreciate your hard work, and I think your hard work has been shows, and people are, you know, acknowledging that.
He actually receives it at this conference that he's going to?
It's the, it's, what's that, Thursday night, it's awarded to the, there, it's, Randy, because he's won it previously, it's to the profession.
Right, it's the, it's, Mr. Crowe won the award for the service to the profession in city management, for all the work he's been doing.
It's...
Nominated by peers.
Nominated and reviewed and awarded by peers.
So, congratulations again, Lowell. And then lastly, I have gotten a lot of calls and I, and emails about overgrown grass, and that's a very understandable frustration to have. There's a difference between having a shaggy lawn and a lawn that's two and a half feet tall. So, I encourage people to report it if they see it, as I was just testified to. Sorry, I'm a lawyer. As was just mentioned, you can text "report" to 815-240-2169, and our Public Works and our guys are doing a good job. We've had just more complaints or violations this year than last May by, you know, threefold, I think. It's a crazy amount. There's a lot to keep up with. They're doing a good job, but if you see it, please report it, because, you know, our neighborhoods, you know, represent our community, so it's important that they, that they look good to represent Freeport well. Thank you.
We agree. Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. Just wanted to echo two of the comments that Alderman Bornhamon had said. One, congratulations to Lowell. That'd be a little premature, given the meeting coming up, but I, I mean, you'd indicated that Director Bukus had also previously received that award, so I think to have two individuals have received that award that are both working here on behalf of the city speaks volumes to how your colleagues who know the day in and day out of their job, a few both of you, and it's a great asset for us. I would also, the second part was just encouraging individuals to make sure that they follow up with that reporting system. As I've mentioned at my Neighborhood Watches and other people, too, you know, we all see things, but, you know, obviously, on our daily routes, you all, everybody else has different routes, and it's, it can't be any simpler than it is now, you know, to text it in. So, you can call us. It's great. We'll take your call, and we'll get it in, but in the amount of time that it took you to call us to tell us to get it in, now you have options that you can do it yourself, too. And as we've been seeing with the iWorks, the administration is responsive to that, so let's maximize these tools and maximize the efficiency that we have going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ross.
Yes, I'll just diddle with Alderman McLanathan and Bornhamon says, good job, Lowell. Let's keep moving Freeport forward because that's what we're all after. Uh, and that's the main thing. And basically, that's about it.
Thank you. Alderman Busker.
Uh, nothing further than tonight.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my Neighborhood Watch is supposed to follow, fall on July fourth, uh, for July, but it is actually been rescheduled to July eleventh. And I made sure that was on the schedule, uh, a year in advance, um, as I'm supposed to do. That's kind of a ki- a hint to, uh, Mr. Shuttman back there. And also to remind Freeport that even though we're not celebrating on July fourth for the city of Freeport, uh, the fireworks this year will be July sixth at the Stevenson County Fairgrounds. And, uh, they call it Light the Night and there will be boxes around town if you care to make a donation or write a check. Um, I know Logan's, um, Bar and Grill in Freeport is one of the places you can donate. And they always appreciate the donations and if they go over the allotted amount, it will apply towards the following year. Um, in the past, uh, the city of Freeport had sometimes supported, um, the fireworks. And we had voted to stop doing that a couple of years ago and I'm fine with that as well. But we do want to be patriotic and so I'm, I'm trying to promote, uh, Light the Night. Again, July sixth, Stevenson County Fairgrounds. Um, they'll have some events and live music ahead of time. And I'll probably bring this up again. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Brashaw. Alderman Mysick.
Yes, thank you. So I also would like to say congratulations, Lowell. Uh, service to the profession. I, I can see the, the level of excellence in which you carry yourself, uh, here in Freeport. We're very blessed to have you here. Um, I wanted also to, to say thank you to some of the city services. I know that we've had some weather with downed trees and so forth. And it seems that those have been cleaned up rather rapidly, even middle of the night of trees falling down and, um, and being cleaned up rapidly. Especially with the size of our, our crew to get out there and respond. And, uh, also for public safety, I, I know there was, uh, a robbery and a very quick follow-up and the suspect was caught and, uh, items recovered. So that's, uh, again, just recognizing some of the services coming in and, and doing a great job. So thank you.
Thank you. Next would be public comments. Tommy.
I wanted to thank Jody Mills. Give me a cupcake for my birthday.
You're welcome, Tommy.
And when I, I wanted to ask Jo- uh, what's this about the, uh, Radio Shack is going to be a new store or?
Would you like to talk about that?
Yeah, that's the Leon Medical Supply is going to go in that center where the Radio Shack used to be behind the Dairy Queen. And they're going to sell a variety of medical supplies and some health supplements as well and things like that.
And I wanted to tell you about that thing about, uh, that Dollar General, you're going to take care of that.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move on to executive session. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
Pursuant to five ILCS one-twenty slash two C two, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Also pursuant to five ILCS one-twenty-two C one, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against lea- legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity.
Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Moved.
Motion made by Alderman McLanathan, seconded by Alderman Ross. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Bornhamon.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
And Mysick.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.